May sixteenth, meeting of the county commissioners. Welcome everyone that's here tonight. It's always good to see people taking interest in their government. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner McCoy to please lead the pledge of allegiance and have the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, our Father, the one who we get all our blessings from, we ask you tonight to come into minister this meeting and bless this meeting. Bless the board here and the servant on this board giving up their free time to be a servant for this county. Bless all our participants here in this meeting tonight. God, we ask that you guide us, guide us in the right direction as we make the decisions for the citizens of this county. Give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the power to make the right decision. Then Lord, I ask you, there's so much going on in this country. I asked you to give us more love because love is the key to destroying hate. This is my prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. All right, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the public agenda?
There was.
Yes, sir.
There was one, that was to add additional fireworks permit, which you have the information on your table.
Right. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So the movement, Chairman.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. All right, at this time, we will consider the consent agenda. Are there any changes to be made to the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposition? Carried unanimously. All right, we've reached the time for the public comment period. Is there anyone that signed up that's to speak, that's here for a public hearing? You're for the public hearing?
Yes, we're here for the public.
What's your name, please?
Michael Powell. My wife signed me up online.
Oh, okay, your wife's. What's your name, sir?
Ellen Wood.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, then we will go ahead to the public comment period, which will last thirty minutes. Each speaker will have three minutes. You have the, you should have received the rules for this public comment period, and I ask you to follow those rules. At this time, I will call Ms. Kayla Forten to come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Kayla Forten, and my address is eighteen Boulder Drive, Sanford, North Carolina, two thousand, two seven three three two.
You can go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I'm here today to bring to your attention some major issues with the school bus stop safety program. The main problem being that there is no due process for those who have been issued a citation. Sorry, I'm pregnant, so breathing is like not super easy. With the program, it states that there is an appeal process specifically stating if you wish to appeal, you can go to the district court and file an appeal within ten days. I went to the courthouse to file an appeal, and I was told they couldn't help me. They told me to call the North Carolina Court of Appeals, who said they could not help me. When I reached out to the school district, I was transferred to the transportation department after speaking to three people there that could not help me. They referred me back to the district office, and I finally got to the legal department, the Harnett County Schools. After over a week of leaving messages, they finally called me back and said she didn't know anything about it. This was in early February, and it's now the middle of May. The ten-day window to appeal has obviously passed. There's not been one person I have spoke with at the school, the courthouse, or the sheriff's department who is in favor of this program. As it is currently, every person who wished to appeal the decision of your administrative appeals board has had their Fourteenth Amendment violated. They have not had access to due process. It is my understanding that the school board, the administrative appeals board, the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, and the clerk's office are aware that citizens have been unable to appeal the decision made by your appointed board for this program. Yet the program continues to run, and you all continue to take the money of the people that you, that put you in office to protect their rights. The U.S. Department of Justice defines this act under section two forty-two, title eighteen, which makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. In speaking with everybody at the clerk's office, they stated they have turned numerous people away who followed the direction of this appeals right given to them by the administrative appeals board. This left them with no choice but to pay the fine. Fraud is defined as wrongful or criminal deception intended to result in financial or personal gain. Would you say that that's what's going on here? Because I feel like the program in its current form is the poster child for everything I have brought to your attention today. I would ask that the program be put on hold until the county commissioners, along with the Board of Education, can come up with an appeals process for the citizens of this county. I feel that I have given you enough evidence today to conclude that due process has been violated, and therefore, every citizen who has been subject to these citations has been violated. I would also ask that anyone wishing to appeal, who is unable to at this time, have their citation dismissed on the grounds of lack of due process of law.
Jamie Guerrero?
I'm here for a public.
Oh, you're for the public hearing? Okay. Sal Seraphin?
I'm also here for the public.
Ms. Leck?
Vanessa Leck.
Pardon me?
Did you say, what was her name, sir?
I think I mispronounced your last name.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Vanessa Leck. My address is three zero two, North Ten Street, Irwin, North Carolina, two eight three three nine. Okay, is it about start? First, I want to thank law enforcement for being here at this meeting tonight. I also want to thank the Harnett County Veterans Office. Commissioner Barbara McCoy has long been a committed member of this commission, demonstrating high levels of leadership, skill, competence, and wisdom that this commission has clearly needed. Commissioner McCoy has and continues to serve as a steadfast example of community leadership in action. Current county manager Brent Trout previously led diversity programming mandatory for all government personnel in his prior position. Former county manager Paula Stewart demonstrated her support for civil rights. Certain commission members prevented a vote in two thousand and twenty-one, which would have publicly exposed the commission members that support or oppose diversity training. In my opinion, Mr. Trout has been prevented from moving forward with mandatory diversity programming for Harnett County government employees. The commission is supposed to help Harnett County, whether it's taxes, asphalt, subdivision developments, environmental concerns, diversity training, veterans' issues, or civil rights, Harnett County government is failing. Whose interest is this commission and the Harnett County government serving? The primary North Carolina election was rescheduled as the U.S. Supreme Court prevented active redistricting efforts, and I concur with this decision on that matter. It is my understanding that there are no signs posted on how to file a complaint regarding civil rights violations, neither on the government walls accessible to the public nor the government website. Harnett County receives federal funding and is supposed to respect federal civil rights laws. I have submitted a formal complaint against Harnett County, North Carolina government with the U.S. Department of Justice regarding civil rights violations. Subsequently, I created a public video and podcast explaining how and why I filed this. This concludes my remarks during my authorized three minutes on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two in Harnett County, North Carolina.
Thank you. Mr. Parsipal?
I'm here for the hearing.
Okay. Elizabeth Longman?
Elizabeth Longman, two three four Hamilton Road. I rise again today to speak to the county commissioners about the amount of money they're wasting at the sheriff's department. After you've already settled a six million dollar lawsuit on our insurance and are raising our property taxes most likely in this next year's budget, you now have gone again and hired another law firm of Wamboldt, Bond, and Dickerson again to defend this same sheriff on another excessive use of force charge. After how much longer will you stop wasting this money of the taxpayers? I also rise in the, for the, for the people who have died from overdoses in this county. This county has tripled the amount of overdose deaths as compared to Johnson County, which is much bigger with much more money flowing through as compared to Cumberland and Lee. We have tripled the amount of overdose incidents in this county. Mister, I don't even know what to call him, Sheriff Coats is now dragging one of the mothers of the bereaved. He drags Ms. Valanda around, knowing that Sheriff Coats had the wherewithal and means to set up things, to come and approach this commission for things that most likely could have intervened in harm reduction and most likely saved Josh Barefoot's life, but no, instead, he lets the young man die and makes his mama come stand beside him while he tries to look good at the next election. I do not know what kind of sycophant sick up here, but at some point, you've got to say enough. Eric Griffith died screaming alone on the floor, overdose withdrawals. Once again, this board does nothing because that life does not matter. We have Christian Griggs, whose blood still sits on a porch somewhere in Anger, North Carolina, and this board does nothing. But we have to show up and smile and say, oh, well done. At some point, you're going to have to say, no more money to Mister Sheriff, no more, as long as Harnett County lives keep being lost, as long as we do not have a drug program, as long as we have no harm reduction. All this is, is like alien talk in this county, what other places are already doing, already have part as part of their platform. We must address our drug problem. Our sheriff has continued to ignore it. It's gone beyond pandemic. He addressed the fire departments and told them there's not a damn thing he can do about it. Stop asking him because the county didn't give him any damn money. But now, we have an epidemic in this county, and we continue to have it. And you, our five commissioners, who can sit up there and take the bull by the horns and address it, or continue to be the ostrich in the sand like Sheriff Coats until you need a vote, and then you say you know what the drug problem is.
Thank you, Ms. Longman. Alan Longman?
Hello, my name is Alan Longman. I'm at two thirty-four Hamilton Road, Bonneville. Reason why I come to talk is that there's problems with the Board of Elections, and one starts off with Sheriff Coats's site being linked personally to the main site of the sheriff's department. I think this is out of character and probably unethical. The other problem I have also is that you're doing things in the prison system, jail, get pre-registering people and the getting them to vote. The problem with this is that you have, you have a sheriff's election, and these people are held captive in there, and you don't know how this is going to happen or what's going on in the jail system. This should be handled by the Board of Elections, just like it handles the home for the aging, nursing homes, and it should be handled the same way. It should not be under the control of the sheriff. And there's another thing that bothers me, too, is that when you ask for information from Claire on the Board of Elections, you don't get a straight answer. And we need to have straight answers. Someone should be able to answer the question about what are the requirements for the jail system for people to be able to vote, and can't even answer that or won't answer it. And the other problem was that when the police were called in to the Board of Elections, a major problem happened because, yeah, she said that somebody came in and scared her or whatever. The problem was not that the police had to come there because she was afraid or why the press charges against somebody. The problem was she took the people and put them in the back room after the deadline was finished. We don't know what happened with the paperwork or what happened once she was, once they were back there. Did the paperwork with Sheriff Coats get there on time? We don't know. And the point was, it was within the hour after the depolls closed for that, for the information. So these are things that have to be looked at, should know better, you have to be above board, you have to show that you're above board, and I didn't see that. I also saw mistakes being made when they were talking about the zone, the zoning in the districts and everything, and they'd tell people the wrong information. My wife had to sit down there and talk to them and say, hold it, wait, let's look another look at it. You can't be making mistakes like that, especially one-sided mistakes. All right? So these need to be looked at and need to be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. That concludes our public comment period for tonight, and we will move to item six on the agenda. I think, do I hear a motion to concerning this item?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about this reappointment. I know Mr. Rouse has recommended that reappointment. I have nothing against that. I guess my, my issue is that the application that accompanied that was submitted in two thousand and sixteen. I'm just wondering, do we not have a more current application to go along with this recommendation?
No, sir. We have asked that they update it, but we haven't received it back yet.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we table this, table this until such time as we receive an updated application.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion in second to table this appointment until we receive an updated application. Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? That appointment is table unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we will move to item seven, which is a public hearing regarding the plan of financing of health care facilities.
Have a motion and second to table this appointment until we receive an updated application. Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That appointment is table unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we will move to item seven, which is a public hearing regarding the plan of financing of health care facilities with proceeds of tax exempt bonds to be issued by the Public Finance Authority for the benefit of Cumberland County Hospital System, doing business as Cape Fear Valley Health Systems and Heart Health Systems. Mr. Trout?
Thank you, Chair. I have just a few comments. We've talked about this at the last meeting, and this is a procedural process that is established for certain organizations to be able to borrow money based under a statute that allows for them to, to use it in a, in a way to finance their operation or their construction project issues. So it's listed very well within the public publication. This was published in the paper regarding this action, and so we would seek your consideration after the hearing for approval. Mr. Charles Boyer, the attorney representing Cape Fear Valley Health, is here in the room and is available for questions if there are any.
Any questions or comments from the board? If not, I will declare the, I will open up the public hearing concerning this motion. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this issue, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion concerning this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan of financing of Harnett Care Health Facilities with proceeds of tax exempt bonds for the organization, Cape Fear Valley Health Systems.
A second.
Have a motion and a second?
Dawson, second, sir.
Pardon me?
You have a second?
Yes, sir. Any comments or questions, discussion from the board? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have a public hearing on a proposed text amendment, case two double oh four dash triple zero one, Harnett County Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Locklear or Mr. Sykes?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll step in for Mr. Locklear on this one. Jay Sykes, Development Services, presenting our first of two items tonight. This is a requested text amendment from Article seven of the Unified Development Ordinance, Sections eight point one and eight point two. The applicant is Forty Site Solutions, represented by Mr. Scott Brown, who's here tonight. This is a request to, to amend the county's UDO where it pertains to active and usable open space. The applicant, who represents, I think, a couple of developers, were looking at the, and this basically looks at open space and how it's used in a standard subdivision, whether it be a large lot or if it was just, would go compliant with the underlying zoning district, say RA forty, RA thirty. So if you're going to have a, for example, if you would have a subdivision with one acre lots, and it would have wetlands in it, then that wetland is supposed to be in an open space. The, the open space is that way it's preserved, environmental sensitive features on the land would be in open space and typically could be in a conservation easement per se. So when this text amendment was added to the ordinance about a year and a half, two years ago, the county was also working on an update of the CTP plan, which requires side paths and bike paths, also the county's bicycle, pedestrian, and greenway plan. So as the two text amendments inadvertently coincided with open space, whereas you have usable open space and then you have open space that's really not, it's, it falls under the definition of open space, but it might be a wetland, so it's not active, it's not usable. It wouldn't be in a, an area where if it was in a subdivision, anyone could use for a play area for trails or anything for that matter. So, so staff recommended approval of this based off of the, the fact that where open space is required is part of the specific development versus where it's being provided. The initial text said provided, a lot of our subdivisions do provide open space, and at that time, ten percent of it should be, at least ten percent of it should be usable. And they're providing open space probably to get more density or something like that. Say, and it wouldn't, it would be a smaller lot size, say, than the underlying zoning district. But if you have a rural subdivision that may, like I said, it may have one acre lots, two acre lots, three acre lots, that may not be on the greenway plan or anything like that. We didn't want to, for lack of a better term, penalize the developer that wanted to do a large lot subdivision. I know there was a lot of explanation going through the text amendment, but again, it's basically saying where open space is provided. So there again, open space is provided everywhere versus where it's required. And then also eight point two is the section where it's the wetlands, talks about the wetlands. Anything where the wetlands is being preserved, that the developer would not get credit for that on the open space. So they, again, they have to provide that to active if they're using it for a density bonus. So staff is available for questions after all that discussion, and of course, staff again is here as well.
So cut, cut to Chase here. My understanding that the proposed amendment would be that the wetlands would not be able to be counted as a portion of that open space?
That's exactly, yeah, that's kind of how the way to look. You're right, yeah. Wetlands wouldn't be counted as the required. And then they also, if you counted wetlands, like say in a larger lot subdivision, they wouldn't also have to be required to do the ten percent if they were doing a standard subdivision. They were doing the type that, that does require open space. You're right, you couldn't use the wetlands, and then you have to add more usable land. Yes, sir. It's kind of, it's kind of a better way to decipher what's usable and what's not usable, if you will.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this open space include buffer zone?
I'm sorry?
Does it include buffer zone?
Buffer zones are, are not included in this open space, no, ma'am. So like if, if you had a buffer zone, say, around a wetland, like that would automatically be, that would automatically be preserved either way. And so if they had a, a buffer zone around, say, a subdivision that had two acre lots, that would, that buffer would still be in there. They just didn't have to say provide like a play area in a subdivision that had two acre lots. You know, like the active recreation side of it. But all of the, like a buffer zone, which is typically kind of coincides with an environmental feature or a stream or something, yeah, that, that's all, yeah, that's definitely still applicable, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Sykes? All right, hearing no other questions from the board, I will open the public hearing concerning this change to the UDO. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Scott Brown, Forty Site Solutions, four oh nine Chicago Drive, Suite one twelve Fayetteville, North Carolina. We are the applicant, and Jay's done a great job of explaining it. I don't think I need to go any, any further explanation of what he's done. It sounds like the, the board members are fairly clear on, on what we're doing or what we're asking for. And I would like to say, I'll be glad to answer any additional questions that the board has, but I feel like Jay's already done a pretty good job of, of taking you through it.
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak concerning this UDO change? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board. I'll entertain a motion concerning the UDO's proposed change.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the UDO change as presented.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr., thank you, commissioners. All right, Mr. Locklear.
We're tag teaming tonight. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our second case tonight involves a land use amendment, map amendment. They're requesting an amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The app, the owner of record is Wingo Holdings, and applicant is Sal Saffano, and it involves eighty-nine point one two acres in the Black River Township. The physical characteristics of the site, the property is vacant, currently vacant and undeveloped land. Surrounding land uses consist of single-family residences, a primary school, and several undeveloped parcels. Approximately five acres of the property is already classified as medium-density residential. Per the application, design would be similar in nature to the adjacent residential development, Aetherstone, which I think has fifteen thousand square foot lots currently or proposed. Well, no, they're on the ground. And, and there would be two planned connections to the Aetherstone development, and we went over that in, in your work session, that there was two, including the access out on the school road as well. Public water is utilized as well as public sewer. The annual daily traffic count on NC two ten is seventy-eight hundred cars. North Harnett Primary School has ninety cars per day, nine buses, and that's two times a day. The requested land use classification change to medium-density residential will not have a negative impact on the surrounding properties due to the residential nature of the area. The requested land use classification is compatible with the surrounding land use as the classification is the same classification for the adjacent properties. And the requested medium-density residential classification would enhance or maintain the public's health and safety and general welfare due to the direct access to public water and sewer to the site. On May second, the Harnett County Planning Board voted unanimously, five to zero, to recommend approval of this land use map amendment based on the zoning compatibility in the existing medium-density residential on the adjacent property. There were several residents in attendance that night, living in proximity, close proximity to the subject, to the subject property, and spoke in opposition to the land use map amendment stating concerns, the potential sedimentation pollution in the creek and nearby ponds, increased traffic on North Harnett School Road, NC two ten, and the adverse effects to the wildlife population. And the available capacities of the schools in the district were also mentioned. As explained in the evaluation, the requested land use map is compatible with the Harnett County regulatory documents and would not have an unreasonable impact on the surrounding community due to the existing medium-density residential designated areas adjacent to the property, as well as the direct access to public water and public sewer. Therefore, it's recommended that a reclassification request be approved. And having, this is obviously a, a much different request than what we're used to as a board. I want to take a few minutes and maybe go through some of the differences between this and maybe a, a rezoning, something that the board and even the guests tonight would be used to. First of all, the land use map or the land use plan is a policy document. It helps us guide growth, and it's not a regulatory document like the UDO. So our request tonight, but how it comes into play for this particular project is that it's part of a compatibility or conservation subdivision. That is where we look at the underlying zoning district, and then we also go look at our land use plan to determine whether a certain density can be acquired. There's other things that, that's involved in that. The developer can choose to do sidewalks, street trees, concrete curb and gutter, and a host of other amenities in order to receive a density bonus. And it is my understanding that that is what the folks are doing or making this request for in order to change this amendment, in order to receive a density bonus to allow them to have additional lots for their proposed development. Further, I would like to point out that there is a small creek that separates this project from the Niels Creek Farms Development that separates, which is a natural boundary. Obviously, when we, when we created the land use plan, we just made a, an arbitrary line that went across and didn't include that natural boundary line as the creek, which would have probably made more sense to use that as a natural boundary and take it all the way to the creek for that. But I would remind you that a big part of a conservation development deck would be proposed for this site would be lots of open space. Open space, as Jay just mentioned in the previous text amendment, and what we, what we usually ask for all the time in this county is we like to see a lot of open space. We like to conserve our natural areas as much as possible. A long-deck creek would be, because it's in a water supply watershed, would also require a hundred-foot buffer that would have to stay off that. So while we understand this goes to the creek, we understand that there would be no lots developed to the creek itself as we would be a hundred-foot buffer to set back and, and that those areas would require, especially if they're wetlands, that they have to go into some type of open space category. You'll see that on projects that, that are similar to this, where you have a lot of environmental features in place. And so you'll see those areas remain in open space and, and helping preserve those highly environmentally sensitive areas for the county. So keep that in mind. Next, I would remind the board that runoff erosion control issues are handled by the state of North Carolina for us. We, 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 we have to look towards them to help us in those, and they, they handle the program for the state, which handles it for our county. So when we have issues, such as Mr. Collins' issues that he mentioned at the last meeting that he was here and we spoke about, we have to work with North Carolina Division Environmental Natural Resource, a lot of folks know it as DNR, to help us get through those problems. And so we are working with them actively, I think, on Mr. Collins' issues that he mentioned. And if there are any that arrive on any future projects or any projects for Harnett County, we have to lean on them for that. I would also remind the board that NC DOT would review all traffic impacts and require all necessary improvements for, for the county. As a lot of folks, a lot of folks don't realize that we have to lean on DOT to handle our roads. We make all the requests we want, but at the end of the day, it's in their, it's in their corner on how they handle our, our roads for the county. Every time that a new development is proposed, we will, we have to look at them for the driveway permit and all the necessary required improvements. So whatever takes place, it's their job to look at that and require the developer or the project, the project owner or the land owner to make those improvements. So, and then last, I know that the board, as well as our office, has received a couple of calls about the, the idea of proposed multifamily for this, for this particular project. That has not been the case. We have not received any proposals for multifamily for this specific project. Matter of fact, if we did, it would be required, because of the underlying zoning district of RA thirty, it would be required to apply for a special use permit. And we would go to the Board of Adjustment for that, and everybody would be notified, all the adjacent property owners, and we would go through a quasi judicial process to handle that. So I'm sure I didn't cover everybody's issues. I tried to touch on some of the ones that we received at the last meeting, some of the phone calls that we've had, and some of the discussions that we've had with board members. I'm available for any questions, and I'll handle any questions that you have tonight. Thank you.
I have a question. How much medium-density space is around this tract of land?
Oh, existing already?
Yeah.
It's five to six acres that's already zoned. It's, it's a small sliver at the bottom of the property that's already zoned, medium-density residential. And below it, it would be the entire south side of it. I don't have that, the Aetherstone project. If we pull back to the map, you can see, there you go, below. You can see this sits right on the bottom, so anything to the south of this project is all zoned, medium-density residential.
Okay, so Aether, Aether, what is it?
Aetherstone. It's hard to say. It is, it's a different name.
That's all medium-density, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's in place, and, and, and most of it's been, I mean, it's been laid out.
And if, if we, regardless of how this change in the land use plan plays out tonight, we're not changing the zoning. The zoning will remain RA thirty.
That's absolutely correct.
Which will allow the owner of this property to build houses on this land.
That is correct. The question tonight, I mean, the, the overall arching theme for everybody in the room is, is what I explained, that if you change this to medium-density residential, then it's going to allow the developer to then it's going to allow the developer to get an additional amount of lots. We haven't received the official proposal, so I can't tell you if it'll be ten, fifteen. The developer is here tonight. He may be able to answer that question for you. But that's the thing to understand. The biggest thing to understand, too, is it's going to be a subdivision. Most likely, it's going to be a subdivision. It can be a subdivision. Let me say it that way. I don't know if they want to pay for it or not, but I'm speaking for them, but it's been proposed to be a subdivision.
Any other questions for Mr. Locklear?
Um, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I am concerned about the fact that you're saying that changing it would allow the developers to get more houses on these lots. That's a concern for me. I am, I was born and raised here, in Hornet County. I've been here all my life. And I'm seeing some things now with the growth that we have in the house and building all these houses on different lots. I'm very concerned about stacking more houses on this particular land and for this lot. And I'm also concerned about the traffic because I'm very much aware that the traffic in that area is already pretty heavy. So these are my concerns. And I think that's, we as representatives of the citizens of this county, we have an obligation to look into, we can't stop these developers. That's not what we, there's nothing we can do. But we can monitor what they're doing and how they're building these houses because these citizens that buy these houses, they're going to be there for a lifetime. And then it's, and that is going to be passed on to their children or whoever. And that is my biggest concern. I know you're making it sound good and all of that, but it ain't good enough for me.
I understand, Ms. McCoy, and I would tell you that those are absolutely valid concerns, and that is certainly that every member of this board tonight should take into consideration. I'm not sitting up here telling you that it's going to sound good.
I understand.
I'm telling you what the technical side of it is. You have to look at each, at taking into consideration what's proposed and all the things that you mentioned, and then make the best decision that you can.
I mean, that area, I'm fully aware of that area, Hornet Central area. It's already stacked with homes. And I'm not saying that the developers don't have a right to continue to build there. But let's just build it in the right way. And my way may not be the right way for the rest of the board and the rest of the citizens in here, but that's just my way.
Well, I can tell you, regardless of decision that you make tonight, we're going to make sure they build it the right way if we can. That's our job.
I have another question. This annual daily traffic count, seventy-eight hundred vehicles. I almost said it's seventy-eight hundred in the morning.
Right.
Maybe not. When was that done?
Once again, we depend on D O T for a lot of our numbers, and so I'm not sure. Do you know the? Yeah, it could be a year, two years old. You always have to look at the traffic count numbers with a little bit of sway in them because they don't go out and look at the roads as much as we wish they would.
I have another comment, too.
Yes, ma'am.
When you tell me it depends on D O T.
I know.
I know. How D O T move.
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware.
So that doesn't give me much hope there. You say D O T, depends on D O T. You wait on D O T, might be a lifetime.
You're right.
You're right. You're right.
One question. How long has the applicant owned the property?
I'm not sure about that. He'll be up in a minute. That might be a better question for the applicant.
Any other questions for Mr. Locklear? Hearing none, I will open up the public hearing. And anyone that wishes to speak for or against this land use change, please come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jamie Guerrero. I'll spell it because it's a last name, G U E R R E R O. I know the planning board asked me to spell it when I was there. I'm with Morrison Ritchie Associates. We are the design engineering firm. My address is fifty-six oh-five Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh, two-seven-six oh-seven. I am here representing Wingo Holdings. I'll just begin. Wingo Holdings, the planning board has brought up and said they were just incorporated five or six months ago. That is not unusual. The, Wingo Holdings is part of subsidiary of a development and construction group called Quality One. Every time they do a new development, they form a new LLC. It's very common. The reason being is it protects, each development is a separate entity of itself, and each development also has different funding sources. And so you form a new LLC, very, very common. So at the planning board meeting, I was able to obtain a lot of information from the neighbors and their concerns. And I think Commissioner McCoy, you had very similar concerns there about what we're trying to do. Even though the designation that we're trying to go is from low-density residential, which I think defines it as one to three units per acre, we're trying to go to a medium-density residential, which is two to five units per acre. In this particular situation, that is not the case. We're still going to be well under two units per acre. So we're still, even our final concept plans, we've done a number, our total number of units are still going to be within that low-density residential range. What we're trying to accomplish is to allow us to do some design, standards are a little bit of higher design standards for this subdivision. And one of the biggest things is there is a primary school adjoining or adjacent to this site. If you look currently, there is no safe pedestrian walkway or travel way for children who go to this school or parents to go to this school to be able to walk to that school. Right now, they would have to walk up NC Highway two-ten, absolutely no sidewalks on Highway two-ten. And you've got a very large subdivision just adjoining to the south of it called Aetherstone. I think it was brought up tonight, who's putting in a number of single-family residential homes. Well, they have connectivity points that are stub-out streets to this parcel, and they're putting in sidewalks on that parcel. But those sidewalks are going to essentially dead-end, still providing no pedestrian connectivity to that school. What our developer is proposing in order to go in with a higher design standard guideline in order to create sidewalks and curbing gutter and safe streets is we have to go through this process and go from a low-density residential designation, which will allow, again, that does allow for regular subdivisions with N C D O T open ditch section roads. It doesn't necessarily require for sidewalks. You just have open ditch section, regular standard state roads. We want to enhance that and take it, so we do have that pedestrian connectivity to that school and to the subdivision to the south. One of the biggest concern are the environmental natural resources that are currently out there. A lot of the neighbors really enjoy, especially to the north side of our subdivision. Our, the proposed property is bounded to the north by a stream. That's why if you look at the property line, it's real jagged. And generally speaking, that's because there's a natural feature that is defining that property. And it is. That's Niels Creek. What we are proposing in order to do sidewalks and curbing gutter on these roads, what that kicks in, and it really doesn't go into ordinance because it goes into state rules, it kicks in a higher level of stormwater quality. So the state will look at this development not as a low-density development. Because we have sidewalks and curbing gutter, we're automatically kicked into a high-density criteria, meaning we have to treat stormwater, the developer is going to have to put stormwater measures in to mitigate for the extra stormwater runoff that would be coming from the roads and the houses. We can't dump that stormwater directly into the creek. And we have to treat it, and we treat it through a process. More than likely, there's a bunch of tools in the toolbox, but most likely, it's going to be captured in a pond, a stormwater pond feature. Not only does that contain what we call the peak flow, the peak runoff flow, it also provides a benefit because it treats that stormwater. It takes out the total suspended solids. It also takes out nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, for one, which are the main concerns of the streams and the estuaries. So that's what going from L D R to M D R will allow us to do. It gives us a better, more high-quality development. I know there's concerns that were brought to my attention during and after the meeting last, two weeks ago, the planning board meeting, about what kind of product are we proposing. We are not proposing multifamily. That includes apartments. That includes townhomes, and that includes duplexes. We are expressly going in with single-family residential home sites. The home sites are going to be of high quality. A lot of issues you got in neighboring counties, you see these subdivisions going in, and they're packing in four to five dwelling units per acre and just packing them in when people do not have yards, you know, they have ten feet in between the structures. This is not the case. We're going to have wide front yards. We're going to have wide backyards. We're limited to either twelve thousand or fifteen thousand square feet depending on how much open space we want to provide. That's another concern, open space. This developer wants to maintain high-quality open space and leave as much undisturbed property as possible, which I believe the ordinance is around twenty-five percent or something like that. In this case, we're going to be well above the thirty percent in preserving open space. So that is why we want to go from this L D R to the M D R. If we go with low-density residential, what that essentially does is it spreads these lots out further. You get bigger lots, but they're spread out, meaning moored roadway, meaning additional stormwater runoff. But the state says, because you got larger runoff, even though you have more runway, they still treat that as a low-density residential and allows you to just use ditches to convey your stormwater. And you can discharge that stormwater into the stream without any sort of treatment. In this case, that's poor engineering practices on my part to allow that to happen. What we do not want to do is contribute to any of the ongoing issues the neighbors have explained to me about Niels Creek with the erosion going on in the creek. We don't want to contribute to that. You know, there is also, we're not asking for a rezoning, and because that is a stream, we have to stay a minimum of thirty feet away from that stream anyway, a natural buffer. Our concept sketches show a greater than thirty feet natural buffer that we've gone so far. Traffic concerns, everyone's concerned about traffic. I work in Raleigh. Let me tell you something. You hadn't seen traffic until you go to Raleigh every morning and try to get back home every evening. That's traffic. Everyone is concerned about traffic. It's been brought up that N C D O T is the one that determines what is done and what isn't done. Let me tell you how N C D O T works. Generally speaking, in a subdivision like this, they will require what's called a traffic impact analysis. What that is, is the developer will hire an engineering firm, not mine. It'll be a third-party engineer that specializes in traffic analysis. And they'll go out and actually count cars and count how many cars are on two-ten, how many cars are turning into this school, North Hornet Road, and determine what is called an existing level of service. What does that mean? Well, every road, everyone who's been on an overcrowded road or has been on a road trying to make a right or left-hand turn and they don't have any stacking distance, so it stops traffic on that road because you've got too many cars trying to make that turn, that is determined a poor level of service. It's rated, kind of like grade school, where you got A through F grades for a level of service. What that traffic impact analysis will do is it will assign an existing level of service as if nothing has changed today and our development hasn't gone in. Then it looks at all the, our development and as well as planned developments or developments that may occur in the future and assigns another level of service. If that level of service is less than what the existing level of service is, we have to mitigate for that. And the developer is responsible for putting in those mitigation means. What do I mean by that? I mean, the developer may have to add a left-hand turn lane on NC two-ten. They may have to widen and make improvements on North Hornet Road, making it safer for the general public. If we didn't have this development, Commissioner McCoy, you're absolutely right. D O T is not going to put those efforts in. They're just not. But what they do is they require the developer to put those measures in and make those improvements to traffic. So that's another advantage of, you know, of our proposed subdivision. So, you know, and as far as transparency, I was at the planning board meeting. I met several of the concerned neighbors, and I will not be able to satisfy their concerns completely. But I have agreed, and we have agreed, to meet with their homeowners association on May nineteenth to discuss our project in detail and also to give more, listen to their concerns in detail. That's what we try to do. That's what Mr. Serafano tries to do. It's very important for him to have a dialogue and try to come to consensus because there's potential ways in our design, in our layout, that we can mitigate some of their concerns. We're very well aware of it. Before our meeting, the H O A meeting on Niels Creek, I'm going to go out there early and actually walk Niels Creek. They got a nice path, I understand, that runs behind the subdivision, parallel in Niels Creek. I want to walk that. I want to be able to make sure that whatever our developer, whatever we do on our side, that we can kind of maintain that tranquility on their side of the stream. That's very important. So that's why we're here tonight. It's not necessarily about achieving more units. Yes, we do get more units, but it's a more compact design. We achieve those units by decreasing the actual road. Instead of having lots laid out all along a long road, we're having a more compact design. Other environmental concerns, where there are some small tributaries, and there are wetlands on that site. We have had a wetland scientist go out, and our design has to take those areas into consideration. So what we do for that is we minimize, first, we try to avoid any impacts. But sometimes you just got to cross a stream because there's no other way to access your property, so you got to put in a culvert. If there's an existing culvert there, great. We're not really doing anything except maybe upgrading it and making it more safe for our road. But if we add any additional impacts, we have to go through a process called the four-oh-one and four-four permitting process. Four-oh-one is a permit that's issued by N C D E N R, Division of Water Resources. And the four-four is a permit that is issued by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. What that requires is to, any impacts, we have to limit our wetland and stream impacts. That's the overall development. We have to limit it to a certain criteria. Right now, I think it's, you know, less than one-tenth of an acre of wetland impacts. If you exceed that, you have to provide mitigation. So we're trying to avoid any wetland impacts and then minimize any impacts that we have. Same with the streams. And that has to be permitted by the state. We can't go out there and fill a stream or fill a low area that's a wetland just, one day just go out and build a road and fill it. We have to have it permitted. Now, the other issue that was brought to our attention is erosion and sediment control. That is my passion. Prior to becoming the, working on the private side, I was the Johnson County Development Engineer, and I was able to bring in or to start the county sentiment and erosion control program because the state wasn't doing their job effectively. It's not the people that are in the state. It's not the people that are in the state not wanting to do their job, they're just completely overwhelmed with being able out there to go out to all the sites that are in construction and to monitor for erosion sediment control. What we do as engineers is we design an erosion and sediment control plan, it has to get approved by the state, and that plan has certain conditions. One of those conditions, amongst a lot of them, is you cannot have off-site erosion or sedimentation, leaving your site and going into another site, or more importantly, leaving your site and going into a water body. If that happens, and I'm not going to sit there and pretend it doesn't, we have a major storm event come through, it can wipe out these measures, and that is a violation of our erosion control permit, and it requires the developer to clean up that sediment the best they can. If they don't clean it up and don't satisfy the permit conditions within a reasonable period of time, the developer is subject to some very, very hefty fines. So, you know, so that is as well as important process in this development, you know, in our request. You know, I'm welcome to entertain any questions anybody, the commissioners may have.
I would like to ask the board, let's finish up with the public hearing, and then we'll, we have questions for the developer, we can ask him at that time, if that's, if the board's in agreement with that.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Alan Button. I live at 61 Karen Court in Anger. Just two quick factual corrections. The jagged property line is not Niels Creek. It's a stream called Soldier's Branch, sometimes referred to as Soldier's Creek. It runs into Niels Creek. Secondly, this company was not formed five or six months ago. It was registered with the Secretary of State less than 12 weeks ago, for what that's worth. We hear the line that it's going to be developed one way or another. Maybe, maybe not, but that's not the point. The question is, how will it be developed? Currently, it's RA 40, LDR, to the north. It's RA 30, MDR, to the south. What's in between? RA 30, like the south, and LDR, like the north. The Unified Development Ordinance requires the Planning Department to follow the county's comprehensive growth plan and the Northwest Area Plan, plans that were adopted just seven and four years ago, after careful deliberation by hundreds of stakeholders. The 2018 Northwest Area Plan describes its purpose as "to serve as a framework for accommodating growth and development while maintaining rural character, environmental quality, and the livability of the area." The plan, quote, "provides a roadmap for how to manage," close quote, "the development, pressure, and growth from the north." Quote, "specifically the rapid growth of Wake County and Fuquay Varina, including protecting the characteristics and qualities that the community values." As you know, those plans and the associated land use maps in particular are not discretionary. The land use map established RA 30, LDR, in these parcels as a transition zone most compatible with the land use classifications for the properties to both the north and the south. As Mr. Locklear said at last week's work session, "Sometimes when we create these boundaries, we always like to use a natural boundary or a property line." And clearly, for good reason, if you look at the map, property lines are what were used here when the land use map was adopted. The Planning Department says that the change is reasonable because the benefits of the change outweigh any potential harm. What are the benefits of the change to the residents of Harnett County? No benefits are identified. The department says that the change will not have a negative impact because the surrounding properties are residential in nature. But that's not the standard. The question is whether there's negative impact in changing from lower density to higher density. Clearly, there's negative impact. The Planning Department also says that the reclassification would enhance or maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare because there is direct access to public water and sewer. That direct access, however, exists whether the designation is MDR or LDR. And obviously, the change would not enhance or maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare. To the contrary, the change would increase the demands on public water and sewer. I can't say it any better than what Commissioner McCoy said last week. She said, "We can't stop growth, and growth is not always bad, but we've got to manage the growth because if we don't manage the growth, who suffers? The citizens in this county suffer." The Planning Department talks about preferring conservation-style subdivisions, but those can exist in either MDR or LDR. Moreover, if a change is made and Wingo is unable to go forward or decides not to, the change would remain. As for the Planning Board, no objective listener attending the May 2 meeting could have decided as they did. After hearing from the developer's engineer, not a single person during the public comment period spoke in favor of the proposed change. A parade of people spoke in opposition with facts and careful analysis. The Planning Board offered no explanation for its decision, not the way to build public confidence in the process. What people said following that meeting are things like, "So much for representative government." They smile and nod, but it was already a done deal. It's just a rubber stamp. Follow the money. There's a difference between cooperating with a landowner developer to make it work within the rules and making it work for a developer by changing the rules, particularly an out-of-county land speculator who formed a development company less than 12 weeks
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Reverend Chris Turner. I reside at 107 North Harnett School Road in Anger. I thank you for a few minutes of your time tonight to address the board. If you will look on the land map and see, right in the middle of this 89 acres, is a three-acre out parcel, right in the very center. That's where I live. My wife and I reside and have for the past seven years. We have a permanent easement to the driveway that comes out to North Harnett School Road. It's three-quarters of a mile long. We purchased this property, again, seven years ago because for us, it was a dream location. Beautiful home, up on a hill, secluded back in the pines. I raise and train hunting dogs. I have 50 American foxhounds, and we raise and train and breed those and also black Labrador Retrievers. It was an ideal location for us to not only have our home, but also the kennels where the noise and odor and things associated with the dogs would not encroach upon any other close neighbors. We've loved that rural setting. I've been pastor at Niels Creek Baptist Church for over 11 years now. What you've heard tonight is really a discussion between low-density residential, medium-density residential. Some would have you believe that it's a matter of 10 to 15 homes or lots, one way or the other. I would submit to you that it really is a matter of whether or not we are giving these folks a green light to proceed and to go on and do whatever they want to do. If you do not approve the change to medium-density residential, is it already a given deal that they will develop this property? Maybe they will, maybe they won't. Obviously, as someone who lives right in the middle of the track, obviously, these folks that are here from Niels Creek Farms to the north, they're here because they would prefer that this not be developed. It's going to drastically alter our quality of life. Mr. Guerrero would have you believe that he knows all of this and studied this land in detail. Again, I would echo what Mr. Button said, that he was not even able to accurately identify the creeks there. On the north side is Soldier's Creek, it empties into Niels Creek on the backside. There's some significant features about this 89 acres. One is the topography. It has tremendous heels and drop-offs that go down to these creeks, feed into these creeks. There are significant tributaries and wetlands on the property. We have seen, as more and more land has been cleared adjacent to it, such as the Aetherstone Subdivision, increased water runoff. During Hurricane Matthew and Florence, we had significant erosion to our driveway easement to the fact that it completely washed it out. And I had to have Ricky Temple come and put in a new tile and riprap in the amount of $15,000 just for us to be able to use our driveway. When there are storms, the water feeds into these creeks and it rushes extremely quickly. And you need to understand that when these drastic changes to the landscape occur, where from the natural landscape like it is to land that is suitable then for development, they're going to come in there with heavy equipment, they're going to flatten a lot of it, they're going to change how the water runs and feeds not only into Soldier's Creek, but into Niels Creek. It's just ludicrous to think that will not have impacts on that. There are other things on the property, such as the Massey Family Cemetery, that Mr. Guerrero did not tell you about. There are other things on the property, such as the historic site of the original location of Niels Creek Baptist Church when it was founded in 1780. The foundation of that church is there on that property. It should be preserved. The Massey family deserves that their family cemetery be preserved and it not be just bulldozed and moved out of the way for houses to be developed. The last thing that I want to really speak to is the traffic concern that Ms. McCoy has already brought up. I would remind you that Aetherstone Subdivision is set to have some 300 homes in it. Going up Harnett Central Road, there's going to be two major developments that have already been started. There's already clearing and grading work taking place there. If you go up 210, past where the Harnett Central Road intersection is, another huge development there called the Farms at Niels Creek. All of these developments, along with Aetherstone, have started, they've already been approved, they put in streets, in some cases, they've stubbed plumbing, but there's not a single house on any of these yet. We don't know the impacts of those thousands of homes that are coming. Imagine if every one of those homes has two vehicles, the congestion it's going to bring to the Harnett Central Road, Highway 210 corridor. That road is so busy. Every day that I pull out, I have a very short commute, thankfully, but every day I have to wait and count cars and many times just pull out, hope for the best as I pull on 210 to go to work. Mr. Guerrero noted the traffic in Raleigh. We don't want that here. The taxpayers of Harnett County deserve better. Think of the school congestion that we already have with the middle school, the high school, and then North Harnett Elementary School. Think of young drivers who've just gotten their driver's license going to school through all of this traffic. They are suggesting to you that they would tie in to the back part of the property, the back half of the property, by coming in through Aetherstone. And if you've seen a site plan for Aetherstone, it's kind of like a web of roads. It's neighborhood streets, it's not a straight shot in. They're talking about going, winding all the way through there and accessing the back of the property there instead of going in through North Harnett School Road. Think of the site plan, and I've not seen it, but I've heard the number in excess of 100 homes, maybe 130, give or take. Now, think of someone having a fire, a medical emergency, a 911 situation, where fire rescue has got to come from Anger Black River, or they've got to come from Lillington because it's almost right on the Anger-Lillington line there. They've got to come up 210 either way. They then got to hope that the school traffic from North Harnett School is not backed up into 210 as it is every day. You've heard no less than 90 cars. Every day, a sheriff's deputy has to be there. It's not a good design for a school in the first place to have one way in and one way out. That's dangerous, but that's what you've got to work with there and what those parents have to put up with every single day that school is in session. Imagine those emergency vehicles have to come up 210, they have to turn into these entrances, weave their way through what will be Aetherstone Subdivision, and then get to the very back of a proposed development that Wingo, Holdings, and Morrison Ritchie is suggesting. The response time would be atrocious. I think there will be real consequences. 300 homes in Aetherstone, that'll be 600 vehicles. Are we then going to pack another 100, 200 vehicles on top of that? Ladies and gentlemen, that'll be almost 800 vehicles that would be dumping into Highway 210 on a daily basis. If you look at the site plan for the two entrances of Aetherstone, they're both just around a curve. One of them is going right around the water tower there on 210. You come around that curve if you're heading toward Lillington, boom, there's an entrance. Somebody's going to pull out of that subdivision and get T-boned and get killed, I guarantee it. Coming from the other way, from the south way, the same thing. When you come from the Harnett Central 210 intersection, you come around a curve that way and a dip in the road, and you're on the next entrance. They have very short turn lanes there for people to be able to turn in, but what have they done to remedy the situation for people turning out? We can talk about DOT all day, but if we give a green light to this, we're setting this situation up. Why not wait and see what the effects are going to be of these developments that are already going in? Once houses are there, once people are living there, why not see what the effects are going to be before we just green light, green light, green light? Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate your hearing. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We love this land, we care for it, and we just want to see the best done for this community and for the taxpayers and residents who have lived there for a long time. I know anytime you've got development, you're going to have this clash with people who have lived there. Mr. Guerrero, Mr. Serafano, they've not come to see me, and I live right in the middle of it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Michael Collins, I'm going to share some information if I can with Mr. Guerrero. Of course, he, I'm sure he needs to cribby through this already, but he'll know what I'm talking about, and I'd also like to share it with you. So I'm going to give you the Aetherstone, which they're going to connect into, and the points where they're going to connect are highlighted there. That'll show you a little bit about what was just discussed, that these are roads through a neighborhood. This is not really a connection to a road per se. But the other thing is environmental, and I'm sure that Mr. Guerrero would be familiar with this if he took a little bit more time, and that's that this particular land is really the drainage basin for about 650 acres. The yellow line around there actually is the fall line to this property. And you'll see that 10 ponds...
Mr. Collins, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Pass one to the court as well.
Yes, 10 ponds, 10 ponds draining either adjacent to this property or across this property. And of course, the issue of springs and groundwater, is that water that is not surface water goes down into the ground, it drains to that point too. So that's why you're having a lot of springs, a lot of wetland issues in that area. And Mr. Guerrero, with his experience, he would know that if he became substantially more familiar with the property. But that lends itself not to higher-density development, but actually a lower-density development. And then, as Mr. Button said, and your land use, planning people said, they talked about... less appropriate for a higher density upgrade. And while this developer may have great intentions, things can happen, his company can walk away, the next company comes in and says, hey, you upzone me for 185 houses, that's what I'm going to do. And they would have to meet some of those things with the state, but anybody who's dealt with them recently knows they're very much overworked. They have a lot of developments that they really can't get to on a regular basis. So things are happening on a lot of developments that, you know, probably wouldn't happen in another time. And I would like to briefly address the traffic, that's mostly environmental, but I mentioned developments going in nearby, there's actually 2,256 houses in nine developments immediately in that area. Of course, Aetherstone is 367 by itself. If you said we have two cars a day going in and out of there, that's 9,400 trips during a day, just from those developments, just in that little area. So traffic is going to be very intense, and I could say, well, maybe another 100 houses doesn't make that much difference. But every little bit that we pile on there is going to be, create a more intense environment. So the combination of a poor area to upzone, not only because it removes what is a buffer of low density between ultra-low density to medium density, if you go to a medium density on this property, you no longer have that buffer in transition between types of properties, but also the fact that there are significant issues around drainage and around erosion control, and they're not going to be helped by higher density. I know Mr. Guerrero talked about curb and gutter. Curb and gutter accelerates flows of water. They can do a lot to try to mitigate that, and I know he'll work hard at that, but his issue is, he's not dealing with 8,900 acres, I mean, 89 acres. He's dealing with 650 acres. That's really the water flows that he's going to have to try to deal with in that environment. And I'm not saying they can't do a good development, and I'm not saying that they can't do a good development at the low density that they're approved for now. I'm just saying that there's nothing about moving to a higher density that is going to improve that situation. And as Mr. Button clearly pointed out, there's nothing there that is mandatory, once it's upzoned, for this developer to do what he's talking about, low density conservation, all of that. Doesn't really have to be done. I mean, he could do it, but it doesn't have to be done. And if something happens and that developer walks away, you have a real problem, because the next developer can come in and he can just simply try to maximize that density on property that's very ill-suited for that type of development. And I thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry, I'm Michael Collins, and I live at 5821 NC 210 North, which is right at the end of the school run that they're talking about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sadie Strickland, and I am a semi-recent graduate from Hart Central High School. I have lived here in Hornet County, close, right off 210, my entire life, and my schooling consisted of North Hornet Primary, Buies Creek Elementary, Hornet Central Middle School, and Hart Central High School. During my time at the middle school, the entire back of the campus, between the main building and the sports field, was filled with trailers and one huge pod, which all held classrooms. This was the overflow area, since there were 30 to 35 kids per class, with no extra room for desks. I can honestly say that I never interacted with the kids in the seventh grade pods, because there was no mingling between those in the trailers and those in the main building, except for electives. I can remember being able to pick out what we called the pod kids, since they were either sporting big winter jackets, wet shirts, or red sweaty faces, depending on the weather. That year, I was lucky enough to be assigned a class in the main building. Things quickly changed when I got to high school. Each year, different teachers were forced, sorry, into the trailers outside. I do believe this was done to give some fairness throughout the faculty, but it was a guessing game for the students to see which teachers would end up where from year to year. I remember my freshman year, I was seeing the upper level carpentry classes, building a huge storage building outside, and I honestly thought that it was going to serve as a classroom the next year. Luckily, I was very wrong, and it later sold as a fundraiser for the program. The class size grew as well when I entered Hart Central High School. The maximum number of students allowed were placed into each room, with desks crammed into every open inch. This was all pre-COVID. One semester, there was a student in my math class who had to sit at the teacher's desk for an entire week, until a chair, not even a desk, was found to accommodate him. My biggest class housed 54 students. Talk about work for that poor teacher, and it was not a PE class, so we didn't have the huge gym. I graduated with well over 300 students, and I can remember the teachers saying the incoming grades were even larger. I'd hate to think about the interesting ways teachers made room for these larger classes after I left. There are many new developments going up in the Hornet Central School District, and they are not yet ready for people to move into. All these future families bring new, in the new houses, bring numerous students, ranging from kindergarten through high school, and I don't think we're prepared for them. We have no plan to house, educate, or transport these new students, who homes are just now being built, much less those whose subdivision plans have yet to be drawn up. I ask you to please postpone this redistricting until we have a clearer picture of the effects these new subdivisions have on our children, not only for those who will move here in the future, but also for those already here as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Witherspoon, county commissioners, my name is Gene Percival. I live at 315 Hartman Drive in Niels Creek Subdivision, District 4. That last comment's going to be hard to follow. I hadn't really thought about, we're talking about the cars and the environment and every, and all the other negative things for this development, is all the children that are planning to move in with their families in already overcrowded schools. I'll be brief. So my comments, I wanted you to meet me. I don't represent a out-of-town developer or a corporation that's coming in to make a profit. I'm a soldier stationed at Fort Bragg, and I've lived here over 10 years. I am your average citizen, that the county commissioners are protecting our interest. I pay taxes here, I own a tractor, and I send a tax payment every year, and the thing that concerns me is the rapid growth. So 10 years ago in Anjar, if you remember, and I agree with Commissioner McCoy, is this rapid growth, if you look at how much Anjar has changed in just the last year, with developments on either side, 210 hasn't gotten any bigger. And there's only one Bojangles in Lillington. And if you come through here in the morning, that's just an example of how crowded it's getting, whether we're ready or not. I would echo some of the comments. What's the rush? So a fallacy of logic that was previously stated tonight is Aetherstone subdivision has already been approved, and it's medium density. So therefore, the adjoining lot to that, the adjoining 89 acres should also be medium density, since we already have it. But I agree wholeheartedly, is why not have some low density and some medium density? And why not wait and see, what is the real impact to Aetherstone? And what is the real impact to all these other subdivisions that we have approved? I'm not anti-development, and I have no ill will against the developer. What I'm advocating for is responsible development. I don't think the time is right, and I've walked over some of that land that we're talking about, and some of that surrounding area, and it's not conducive to a subdivision. You couldn't have picked a worse tract of land. There's plenty of other flat land that they probably could do a better job with. So if we're going to have low-density land anywhere in Hornet County, then it needs to be land that has a very complex topography, that has streams, has wildlife and nature and all that stuff, before we destroy it. I don't have any experience being on a planning committee, I don't have any experience being on a board of commissioners. I was never mayor of Anjar. But I have to believe that we're all looking for responsible growth, and we all want the wisdom to make a really good decision tonight. I also have to believe it's much easier to go from low density to high density than to 10 years later decide we made a mistake and try to go from high density to low density. Once these wetlands are gone, we can't put them back. The last comment I'll make is, I never got notice that this was even happening, and I know that's surprising. So in Niels Creek, most of the residents in Niels Creek don't even know that this is going in, because they notified the people whose lots were adjoining to that subdivision, but not the people who have deeded access to it. So everyone in Niels Creek subdivision has the ability to use those trails. None of those people were ever notified about this. So you're seeing a small representation of people from Niels Creek that heard maybe word of mouth from the owners that actually got the postcard in the mail. I'm glad that I found out. Again, I made my home here 10 years ago, stationed at Fort Bragg. When I come home, it's such a rural area that I'm not in a rush to see that ruined. And so I would ask you, please consider postponing this. Again, I'm not anti-development, anti-growth. I know it's going to happen. I just want it to be responsible growth, and we can always move forward, and we can always go to medium density, we can always build more houses, we can always build more roads. But if you think about that Bojangles, you can hardly get in that drive-through as it is, and I didn't even think about the schools and how overcrowded they are, and with all the families that are moving into Aetherstone that you've already approved, we haven't seen the impact of that and where those kids are going to go. It's just going to cost the county more money in services, more money in roads. You guys will have to pay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Again, my name is Kayla Forden. Do you need my address again, or anything? 18 Boulder Drive, Sanford, 27332. I've lived here for about 11 years. I've been a real estate broker in the area for over 11 years, since I've been here. And one thing that I would recommend, Commissioner McCoy made the comment that, you know, people are going to spend their lifetimes in these houses and pass them down to their family. If you've toured a lot of these new construction homes, you will know right away that they're not going to be passed on from generation to generation, because they're not going to last that long. I would recommend to the commissioners to go tour some of these developers' homes that they've already built in other areas, and see if they can put their money where their mouth is on the quality of what they're building in our county. And, you know, I think that would be a good idea and a good place to start, when they sit here and talk about the quality of their homes. Because I've been in a lot of them, and I can't speak for this developer, but they're not super great. So I just wanted to put that two cents in.
Thank you.
I'm Claire Cooper, and I live at 226 Hartman Drive in Anjar. A lot of people have already said a lot of things that I would agree with, and I'll try to make mine very brief. The developers are going to make a very good profit without changing to medium density. They're going to make a good profit at low density, or they wouldn't develop. It makes good business sense to try to maximize your profits. But I've had a lot of questions about this. Are any of these profits going to be spent in Hornet County? Will the developers choose to live in the developments next door, or the development that they're planning to put on this property? Couldn't they also do these extra protections for the environment, conservation, whatever is going to be maximally helpful without changing to medium density? Couldn't they do that at low density? Does Hornet County really need more medium-density land right now? Do we have a housing shortage in the county? And if so, is it a shortage of the kinds of houses at the probable price range of the houses that will be in this development? And a lot of the other things a lot of people have said are interesting, but it seems to me, and I agree with them, the reasons for their weak application are pretty clear, and I read this application multiple times and tried to dissect it. It's very weak. The only reason it says that it maintains health, safety, and general welfare is because they will have access to public water and sewer. Well, that means they won't have to have septic tanks or wells, but I think there's a lot more to that question than just the septic tank or wells. There's nothing wrong with intelligent development, and there's nothing wrong with maximizing profits. I mean, that's how business grows. Seems to me the question that we're raising tonight as homeowners is, is maximizing the profits of another limited liability corporation more important than the quality of life for people in Hornet County?
Anyone else?
Seeing no one move to come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. And commissioners, if you have questions or comments, this is time for you to ask those questions. How many units are you planning? Or do you, have you gotten that far in your...
We're still looking at various layouts and concepts, so roughly speaking, it'll probably be 120 units on 90 acres, so that gives you a density of, I don't know, 1.4 units per acre. But again, we're still in the conceptual phase, and trying to determine what's the best site layout. But there are some givens. We do have to connect to the Aetherstone subdivision, you know, for the connectivity purposes, traffic purposes.
Thanks, sir.
It was brought up about the cemetery. Do we have provisions to preserve cemeteries?
Yeah, the state requires that, that you have to treat, they have standards for how you treat cemeteries whenever they, when you're in developments and things like that. I think, I don't want to speak specifics to it, because I don't want to be inaccurate and tell the board something, but there are standards in place for when cemeteries, where they require them to be preserved. And I think there could be even a method where they can move them to a Seeing no one moved to come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And commissioners, if you have questions or comments, this is the time for you to ask those questions. How many units are you planning? Or do you, have you gotten that far in your?
We're still looking at various layouts and concepts. So roughly speaking, it'd probably be 120 units on 90 acres. So that gives you a density of, I don't know, 1.4 units per acre. Um, but again, we're still in the conceptual phase, um, and trying to determine what's the best site layout. But there are some givens we do have to connect to the Atherton subdivision, um, you know, for the connectivity purposes, traffic purposes.
It was brought up about the cemetery. Do we have provisions to preserve cemeteries?
Yeah, the state, state requires that, that you have to treat, they have standards for how you treat cemeteries whenever they, when you're in developments and things like that. I think, I, I don't wanna speak specifics to it because I don't wanna be inaccurate and tell the board something, but there are standards in place for when cemeteries, where they require them to be preserved. And I think there could be even a method where they can move them to a different place, but I think most folks just kinda preserve them in, in place.
We would propose any cemeteries that are discovered, it's gonna be part of our space. We all preserve those. We do not disturb those that have cemeteries.
What about the, uh, the original site of Niels Creek Church? Do you know where that is?
I do not. I do not remember the history of that, where the church was. We have surveyed the site and we've had a environmental company go out and look. It's called a Phase One Site Assessment Report. They have reportedly have been told there's a cemetery out there that has not been identified yet. So generally, if it is identified in the process of development, it stops everything. Uh, we have to notify the state and then we, uh, usually we just in a lot or something, that lot becomes an open space lot. And you have to, I believe you have to put a barrier, fencing barrier around it as well.
How is this, uh, what's the current zoning on this property?
R30.
R30?
Yes, sir.
And it's, uh, low density, right?
It's currently the, the, the low density aspect of this thing comes, and I, I tried to explain it earlier and maybe I didn't do a really good job because I've been listening to the comments and they've all been great comments, absolutely great comments and things that the board should certainly take into consideration. When it comes to us as a planning department, we prefer a compatibility or conservation style subdivision, which is why when it becomes medium density residential, it, it's an offset. It gives us more lots to the developer, but we're hoping that in return, that they do a better development. We're hoping for those sidewalks. We want the curbing gutter. We want the street trees and we want the wider streets. So I don't know if I explained that really well in the beginning. Um, if this developer goes away, another one comes, yeah, they would have the same access to give us those same benefits right back. Or they could develop it as it sits. You can leave it as it is tonight and they can develop it as a standard subdivision. Standard subdivision does not require sidewalks, does not require street trees, does not require curbing gutter, open ditches. And, and so it's an offset, you know? And then there's also other offsets. Everything that these folks brought up tonight, traffic, school overcrowding and all those other things that come into play. So you have to kinda look at everything and make a decision. But I just want everyone in the room to understand where we're coming from as a planning department. We prefer to see that type of development versus the standard straight, straight subdivision. We believe that it, it is a little bit, it is quality, better development for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Locklear. Anything else? Anyone else got any questions?
I just wanna clarify, they can still do that, correct, under low density? I mean, he was speaking in regards to the quality that.
Yeah, yeah, they could, they could, they can still do that. It's a little bit more of a carrot for them if it's medium density residential to maybe go that route. But yeah, they could, they could utilize that. They're not gonna get as, as many lots. Um, but, but yeah, they could still go that route. So.
I do have a question that I had asked. How long has, uh, this entity owned the property?
I was put in a contract in December and I believe that it closed in March, and then it was transferred into one of our older companies that just holds on to the property until it changed its hands.
You have any other developments inside the county?
We do.
Where at?
We have one on, uh, off of Highway 42. We have a 19 lot development there. And we also own, uh, property in the Perry Creek.
Spring Lake.
Spring, yeah. Spring Lake area, excuse me.
Do I hear a motion concerning this matter?
I make a motion that we deny this request to, uh, not rezoning, but, uh, update the land use map from low to medium density.
Johnson, second, say the motion.
Three.
Okay, you second that?
We have a motion and, pardon? We have a motion and second. All in favor of denying this permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion, uh, this, uh, change in land use, uh, map is, uh, denied. All right, Mr. Trout, uh, we will hear the budget message and the presentation of the budget.
Thank you, Chair. Tonight I'll present to you, uh, verbal budget message regarding the FY 2023 budget. I presented it to you today for your consideration. Harnett County has statutory requirements that we must budget for, but we also must look at budgeting for improved quality of life for our residents. The budget has been prepared with, with the purpose of supporting your strategic goals and priorities. The property tax reevaluation increased our assess, excuse me, the property tax revaluation increased our assessed values by approximately $3.8 billion. The growth in the county continues to create challenges for provision of service and management of our government. The appeal process for property owners is ongoing at this time. So for instance, we're not aware of exactly how many appeals will be approved. But with all that in mind, we need to look at what we're going to do for the future. Our current tax levy rate is 75 cents per 100 valuation. The known valuation reduced by our expected valuation loss provides a calculation of a revenue neutral rate of 56.1 cents per 100 valuation. The revenues in total compared to expenses for our continuation budget leads to a deficit. In order to meet these needs, I am recommending the tax levy rate be set at 59.1 cent per 100 valuation. The rate of 59.1 cent is three cents more than our revenue neutral rate. The proposed rate is a reduction of 15.9 cents per 100 in our levy rate. That means our levy rate reduction would be roughly 21.2% reduction. We looked at all of our other revenues besides property tax and we see good news as well. The sales tax is expected to surpass our FY 2022 projections. Based on the current research, the North Carolina League of Municipalities projects that local sales taxes for FY 2122 will be 10.25% above last year. They project an increase of 3.75% over the current year's levels. In other words, we're growing, but not as fast in our sales tax. Harnett County sh- share of sales taxes with the municipalities is based on an ad valorem method, meaning our sales tax distributed to the county and the municipalities in proportion to the total amount of ad valorem taxes levied by each entity. If the county significantly lowers its tax rate, as I'm proposing, and the municipalities do not lower their levy rate, then our percentage of sales tax distribution will decrease. At the time of the recommended budget preparation, the municipalities have not decided what their rate will be. However, we're informed that many of them will likely not be at revenue neutral and some may be at their max level. That's still to be decided. Therefore, we'll continue, we've prepared the budget with the assumption that they will all go at the max level. If they do not, that will mean additional revenues for us. Harnett County School District presented their request for funding to the county. The county, the school district in my proposed budget will see an increase per student from $12, well, excuse me, 1,203.17 cents to 1,209.31 cents per student. Funding includes covering all charter school students that, um, go to that location. Total amount of base funding would increase by $158,020 for next year for our school district. In addition, Harnett County will continue to provide Harnett County School District with an additional 1.4 million from ongoing revenues for their capital project needs and another 1 million for one-time revenues to fund the maintenance fund. We have included a 10% increase across the board for our rescue squads throughout the county. I'm also recommending increases in two rates for fire departments, the Andrew and Boone Trail Fire Departments. The county also levies on the Averusboro School District tax. No changes recommended for that district. We are faced with surrounding counties offering signing bonuses, retention bonuses and other premium pays. Many of our departments remain woefully understaffed with a current total of 101 full-time vacancies as the beginning of May, of which 63 of those positions are in our public safety department. The recommended budget includes providing a 3% cost of living adjustment to all staff and to continue offering a 1.5% performance pay increase to staff that meet expectations and have a positive performance evaluation. I feel it's, it is appropriate coming off of the recent 10% increase that you recently approved. We are also this, required this year to increase our retirement contribution for the formula provided by the state. So there were additional costs for us there. Another important note to make is our medical insurance premiums increased by 5%, but we were able to avoid passing that cost on to the employees. We plan in this coming year to conduct a compensation study that will provide us recommendations as it relates to what salary should be adjusted to for our staff in order for us to stay competitive. So therefore, I wasn't recommending a significant increase in the compensation rate for next year. As part of our expansion budget, I'm recommending the addition of 19 new position, positions in the general fund to respond to increased workloads in various departments. These, these requests are detailed in each department's budget. Many of the positions are partially funded by the state of North Carolina and our DSS S Department and are created to improve a better ratio for caseworkers to the cases that we see. In addition, a couple of the positions move part-time employees to full-time status based on the increased workload in those departments. I am recommending that the county continue to fund the RSVP program that was previously funded by the federal AmeriCorps senior grant. In FY 2021, there were 207 active RSVP volunteers serving in the county and they provided 21,360 hours of unpaid service to our community. These 21,360 hours equate to $580,992 in savings to our local governments, business organizations and civic organizations across the county. Historically, teen court has been fully funded by the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council grant, but funding was substantially cut in FY 2023. Our cooperative extension received a $35,000 grant in funding and I am recommending that the county fund the remaining 22,000 necessary to cover the expenses of this important and worthwhile program. The program has had extremely high success in impacting our teens in a positive way and changing the course of their lives. Harnett Regional Water continues to produce a high-quality water at a reasonable cost. There is no rate increase requested in this year's budget for Harnett Regional Water. They continue to make plans for future expansion projects and they will be, that will begin construction in the next year. Solid Waste also will not receive a rate, will not raise rates in the coming year. They continue to perform operations at our landfill and convenience sites in an exemplary way. The Harnett Regional Jet Port continues to work on improvements such as the runway lighting, recently completed apron expansion that is upcoming and also terminal construction and other improvements that are upcoming. The budget also includes funding for the hiring of a new jet port manager. We know that economic development is important with this area of our government. Economic development was also a key point in your strategic plan. But the budget targets funding to accomplish the economic development plan outlined by Director Lockeney. The budget provides funding to add a marketing director to the department to begin a better focus on marketing our county. The budget I am proposing provides for funding needed for schools, community college and other departments to continue to provide quality service and support the citizens of Harnett County. Proposed budget provides for increases in order to operate our government and covers new expansion items related to keeping up with our growing county and their operations. As stated previously, I'm requesting a small amount of levy increase over revenue neutral, but that amount is still a significant reduction in the levy, but it allows us to keep pace with inflation for our operational costs. I wanna thank Central Carolina Community College, Fire and EMS Departments, Harnett County Schools and other community partners for their collaboration in developing this budget. I wanna thank my department directors for submitting their information requests in a timely manner with well-thought-out justifications for their requests. I wanna thank Renee Pascal for her support and assistance throughout the budget process. My last thank you, though, goes out to Lisa McFadden, our budget director, for all the countless hours she has spent preparing the budget for your consideration. We are blessed to have her as our budget director. We will have many budget discussions as, as individually, but we will also have on the, on the agenda for May 31st an opportunity to discuss changes that you may be interested in for the budgets and answer questions that have been proposed over the next two weeks. We intend to have a joint session with the school board on May 31st to discuss their budget requests. Next, we'll have a hearing that will be conducted on June 6th regarding this budget and final approval is slated for June 20th. We look forward to receiving your comments, questions and direction over the next month regarding this proposed budget. Please contact Lisa or I if you have any questions and we'll respond as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Anyone got any questions for Mr. Trout? I think we've all, has everyone had an opportunity to go through the budget? You haven't yet?
We, we're working on scheduling. We've got a couple of scheduling conflicts with Commissioner Nickel. We'll get to that.
All right. We'll move to the, uh, no one has any questions. We'll move to item 11 on the agenda. Mr. Trout?
I have nothing further, Chair.
Nothing further. All right. And with that being said, we will move to new business, item number 12. Mr. Smith?
Back again with a fireworks permit that we got last week, two, two days after our last meeting. Uh, this is for a shoot at the Bob Barker Retreat on June 4th. It's been applied for by Class A Services. Fire Marshal's Office has looked over the application. They meet all the requirements and insurance requirements and have met all the fire code compliance issues also.
Any questions or comments about this, uh, request?
Motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fireworks request for Bob Barker.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any objection?
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And don't jump on that.
We are adjourned.